So we'll start with a roll call for attendance. Carolyn Coffey.
Linda Giacomo. I'm sorry, Sarah. Linda Giacomo.
Sarah.
Elaine. You're on mute.
Elaine Breslow.
Catherine O'Callaghan.
Catherine O'Callaghan.
Catherine Harvey. We lost her. Megan Brinsey.
Megan Brinsey.
And Catherine Harvey was here. I presume she will be coming back. Okay. Thank you. It's hard when like everyone's order on the screen is different. So we'll figure out a way to make that smoother. Thanks for making the time to talk about the budget, which is due on Friday, so that we could give Megan some feedback and then allow her to send it on to the powers that be. Did everyone have a chance to look at the information that she sent to us in advance?
Yep.
Yes, yes. Okay. Megan, do you want to just kind of talk through your three sets, what you did, and then see if anyone has questions?
Sure. Let me just.
Ah, there she is.
Sorry about that. I just, we're waiting on a puppy coming to Logan tonight. And that was the lady from the rescue just calling to say that they are not going to make their connecting flight. And she's not even sure they've left Aruba yet. So anyway.
Oh.
So maybe it'll be tomorrow. It's a rescue, like they're called Kanuku. It's like these street dogs from Aruba.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. They're all over the place because.
Yeah, one of my friends just did that, too.
Families all over Go As it.
Cool. Okay. Let me share my screen here. Okay. So. So Don Piat, the finance director, wrote an email to all the department heads asking for three budgets. One as a level service budget and two budgets that represent budget cuts. And those cuts need to be in the expense line. So I'll open the happiest budget first. So this is our level service budget. Pardon me, I'm so used to having a touchscreen now. I'm trying to touch the computer. So the personnel budget is the personnel budget. It has the union increases in it. Education incentive longevity. We've continued our education reimbursement this year. That is in their union contracts that hadn't been budgeted previously. This year, we only need $5,000 because Bronwyn will be finishing her master's program. Yay. And so we won't need to reimburse her for anything because she won't be in school anymore. So this would be for Megan Damiano and Nick. So that's in there. And then the sick weave incentive. So that's there. If somebody doesn't call out of work for a year, they get a little bonus. And so we kind of make a guesstimate every year of what we think we're going to see for attendance. But the big changes are going to be. Pardon me, I was making some adjustments here while watching the news. So that was a little distracting. So in this budget, we just kept all the budget lines the same. I did ask for an increase in books and magazines. Our materials budget. There's a few reasons for that. One of them is because we really want to keep those increases going from the town. They really should be paying a majority of our, if not all of our materials budget. It's a point of certification. Another reason we asked for a little bit more money in that budget line is because we had such a large increase last year in our budget, our MRR, materials expenditure requirement also went up. We need to spend 19% of our budget on materials. So because our budget increased, that requirement for us increased as well. We kept $7,000 in the supply line. And what we did here is we moved $4,000 into a marketing line. So we found that we're spending quite a bit of money out of our supplies line on marketing. And that is a focus of ours, at least since I've started to increase our marketing and the awareness of the library throughout the town. So we decided it'd be a nice idea to separate and make a new budget line that's marketing. As you probably read in my email, OCLN assessment. So OCLN agreed to use some of their emergency funds to lower the assessment for OCLN libraries, at least for this year. I don't know what they'll do next year, if they'll choose to do the same. But it was nice to save a little bit of money on that line item. Meetings and conferences and dues and memberships stayed the same. So we're looking for a little bit over $2,000 increase in our level service budget. Anybody have any questions about this one?
So when you, Megan, when you talk about marketing, would that include the newsletter that gets mailed out?
Yep. So newsletter, sometimes I'll pay for like Facebook likes or I'll pay a little bit money on Facebook to promote an event. Our e-newsletter subscription, that would cover that as well. And any additional things that we decide to do, you know, a few years ago, I think everybody did magnets, which I think is a great idea. So any type of promotional items, the coasters that we did this year would be a marketing item. Thanks.
The newsletters themselves. Sorry. Go ahead, Catherine.
Megan, sorry. The, what's the total budget that you have for your books and magazines? Because some of that comes out of different funds, correct?
Yeah. So this year, Carolyn and I just talked about, so I think it was 139 or 137 we need to spend this year.
And I just did the quick calculation. It'll be 100 with this budget, we would have to spend $141,000 on materials. So if the town.
It's half, 50%.
Yeah. So the town, if the town agrees to the 70, it would be half. Our, the money from the CLT has been about 65,000, if I remember correctly. We, so we are a little short. We do have some money left over from past years where we haven't spent all of the CLT funds. But clearly, we're going to have to get more from the town in order to be able to meet this requirement.
Yeah, I guess that was my only question is, it, you know, should it be 75?
I'm happy to ask. I'm always happy to ask for more.
I know, I know.
I mean, I'll let you all discuss. I mean, in my perspective is I like to push a little bit, but there, you know, you also don't want to insult or annoy. So I thought 3,000 was maybe kind of a little bit of a push, but not so much that I'm being kind of disrespectful of what's being asked. But I'm always happy to ask for more.
At least we have a very good justification for asking.
Well, I was just going to say, isn't, you know, aren't we required in a way? The town has to do that because our accreditation and things are linked to that. So it's not like we're being greedy. It's in order to comply and to stay open, certain things need to happen.
And remind me that, I know that the MAR is related to state aid. And what is the, what is the MRR?
That's also state aid. So.
Like if we don't meet it, what are the consequences?
We have to apply for a waiver, just like we would if we didn't meet our appropriated budget. Or our hours open. So I'm going to just jump over to this document, the MBLC requirements. I know you're familiar, but. So these are all of the things that we need to do to meet certification. And if we miss one, we have to apply for a waiver. So some of them for us, you know, aren't a problem, like hours open, you know, making no charge for library services. You know, director requirement, some of it's, you know, not a challenge for us. But it's really the funding pieces, the material expenditure, number five. And the appropriation from the town are really the two big ones, I think, that are not a challenge for us, but something that we have to watch for.
Megan, how likely is it that any of this will be kind of waived given COVID, you know, or, you know?
Yeah. So basically what the MBLC is saying is if libraries funding dips below the MAR, the municipal appropriation requirement, they want to see that other town departments are cut proportionally. So they don't want to see the library cut 30% and, you know, police gets cut too. That's when there's going to be a problem.
So do we have a sense of what other departments, what their budgets are going to be looking like? I mean, not specifically, but just.
I don't. So I did have a brief conversation with Don today, just because I was being nosy about if towns have seen what their state aid is going to be. Or, you know, if they know what their, if we know about our full revenue from last year. And so Don told me that most of that is still up in the air. We're really not sure what kind of state aid is coming in, which is a big one. And he's not positive because he's not sure what's going to happen moving forward, what our revenue is going to look like for the town. I think most of it is residential taxes, so that stays fairly steady. But I think there are things that are not as sure. So he really couldn't give me an idea of what was going to happen, what I was kind of needling for.
Megan, when did they determine when state aid is funded?
So usually they are, they would have already. So because of COVID, everything's really been difficult. I know like FY21 state budget didn't get voted through until late. So I don't know. All right, I'll move on to next budget. Or do you want to discuss the materials budget line? Does anybody else have different feelings?
Anyone?
Okay.
I think 70 is a good number.
Okay. All right. So what are the 5%? So personnel all stayed the same. But we were asked to cut 5% from our expenditure line. So some of the things I chose, maintenance and repairs. It seems that the facilities department has a library budget line that they use. So I feel that next year is probably not a year to do anything extravagant. But if something breaks, we will be covered under the facilities, library, facility budget line. So I did cut that down by $1,000. Technology, again, I don't think next year is the year for anything grandioso. Technology, a lot of our necessities are covered either through the technology department or OCLN's assessment line. So this technology line generally will be used for upgrades or, you know, anything additional that we want to implement that is necessary for library service, any type of innovation. But next year, I don't think we need to be extravagant about that. Materials budget, I just cut it a very small amount, but I didn't want to cut into it too much because again, you know, we're going to be relying hard, more on the CLTs and other lines to be able to make sure that we are hitting the requirement there. I cut the supply line, added the marketing line.
Megan? On that, in the, in the level services budget, I think the supply line was 7,000.
7,000.
And now it's 7,900.
Yeah.
Because we made that change. So you have 900 extra in there that you could apportion, you know, however you think is appropriate. I'm assuming you could add it to materials or back up in technology or something like that, if you think it's.
Yep, I agree. Let's see. Now I've lost my train of thought. All right, I'll just do that later. Okay. Yep, I agree. So this needs to go to 700, 7,000. Let me do it. There we go. And so then I did cut meetings and conference and dues and memberships. It doesn't, you know, dues and memberships are important as continuing education and things like that. But, you know, again, not an emergency that we need to have it. And we can always resubscribe to our associations the following year. Meetings and conference, so generally this has been used for mileage. And I think we never, we never quite spend all of it. Or if we do, it's spent on the book delivery service that Kristen does. And I'm going to have a conversation with the friends about that tomorrow because that is a service that they kind of claim, they claim as, you know, something that they provide, which is absolutely fine. But I'm going to kind of see if they would be interested in paying mileage for that program.
They, they used to provide the service. There was a woman who had been the Deer Hill librarian, who was a friend of the library and loved to go visit the homebound and bring them the books and stuff like that.
Yeah. And I know Linear goes to Sunrise, too. So it's not something they don't do at all. But they have, you know, have some staff assistance. So maybe that'd be something they'd be willing to take on, at least for one year.
Can I ask a question? How often do you use the photocopier?
Oh.
In our inside. And I mean, just now with scanning and, I mean, when the library was open, it wasn't utilized? Do you use it?
I would say we use it quite a bit. We no longer use it for our newsletters. Bronwyn's a genius and found a service that has cost us about half of what we were spending to print it in-house. But we do use it quite a bit. And actually, I think we have a revolving account now, too, for patron copying.
That number is 65,460, I believe. For the.
Books and magazines.
The books and magazines. If you add the 900 to the number that was there before.
No, I'm sorry, Carolyn. What was it now? I don't know what the number was.
65,460 is what it would be if you add 900 to the number that was there before.
Thank you. All right. Any questions about that?
Just quickly, maintenance and repairs. When you say the town, we have a, we have a library budget or allowance. Do we, what is that number? I'm just curious.
I don't know it off the top of my head. Do you, Bronwyn? No, I'd have to check and get back to you. It's not a tiny number.
They get kind of close to the vets. They don't, they'll come and fix things that we need, but they don't normally say you have $10,000 for this year to spend. It's more, we call them and say, you know, we have a leak somewhere or something like that, and they come and fix it. I'm not really sure what the limit is.
So if we have a mold issue, who pays for that?
I think they would.
They would. Yep. Yep. Since I've been, and it's only been two years, but since I've been the director, it seems to me that we are in charge of paying for things that are in addition to. And that they are in charge of paying for maintaining the building and the grounds. So like the HVAC contract, all of those things, if there's something wrong with the HVAC, anything like that, seems as though that they are in charge of that. And we would be in charge of if we wanted to upgrade something or.
I think this is a relatively new concept for the town that when Mark Kelly created kind of the facilities department, they began, you know, they, they realized that the buildings were not being maintained the way they were supposed to. And it used to be that we had to grovel for every single repair we wanted done. And, and what would you say, Bronwyn? Maybe, I would say it's less than five years that we've been doing. Remember, we had like broken windows and we, we had to find the money to pay for it. So I think this has only been, you know, in the last maybe three, three years, three or four years, maybe.
They're pretty responsive now. They're, they come over, we open a ticket for things that we need repaired and they, they come pretty quickly and never charges anything for it. So it's, it's a lot better than it was, for sure.
Yeah. It's terrific. Good job.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know if it was us, but.
Yeah, but you guys maintain the relationships and that helps a lot.
You made cookies, right?
Don't hurt either. And the ornament.
And the ornaments.
All right. And I'll move over to the 10%. It looks like I kind of did the same thing with supplies here, so I'll have to change that. But. Let's see. So this budget needed to be 10% less, which, you know, for a budget that's not that big and we don't have a lot of wiggle room, you know, we need to have the OCLN assessment the way that it is. 10% cut to us is, is quite significant, especially in our expenditure line. So maintenance and repairs just went away. Technology went way, way down. Supplies probably could be at the 7,000 and change that. Marketing at 4,000. And so that brings us to where we need to be, kind of for the same reasons that I explained in the last budget, except for just a more significant cut to show the 10%.
The materials line would be 64,311.
Thank you. Any questions?
So do you have any sense of where they may come out on what, which one of these budgets they may, they may take most seriously?
I really don't. I, I really don't think it's going to be the 10%. I'm going to knock on wood while I say that. I really don't think it's going to be the 10%. But I don't know. I can't tell you. I kind of, I tried to figure that out today and I didn't get, I mean, I don't think Don has the answer either, so.
Does anyone else have any?
I have a question. With this 10%, if this got passed, would you be looking to supplement any of the kind of cuts that we were forced to make? By, you know, trying to raise money or try to get the friends to help?
I mean, the friends give us quite a bit of money every year for programming. So I don't think that would be my first place to go. And we do quite a bit of fundraising through the CLT already. I mean, I think it was last year, it was $70,000 or even more, $70,000 to $75,000 went to operating. And that was all, that was a fundraised amount of money. So, I mean, that's, that's fairly significant and quite a bit of work for a lot of people. We do have some grants still around and we have our gift account. You know, do I want to use those? Not really. So I think it would just be a year of kind of just running the ship and really not doing anything additional to what we're doing now, which would be unfortunate. But that's, I think, what, if we start to look at cuts, I mean, when the budget gets cut, services do too. That's just the reality of it. You know, we could try to be creative, but, you know, I don't want to get ourselves into a situation that we're kind of in now is, you know, we did all this fundraising and we were creative. And now we rely fairly heavily on our fundraising. And we need to be careful about that because that is an unsure way to fund ourselves. And we're doing a significant amount of it. So, you know, I don't want the town to think that we can just continue to be resourceful on our side to keep the library certified. It's just, it's not a good expectation for them to have of us. It's good to be team players. It's really important to be team players, but there's, there's a line and I think we're just about there.
Yeah, I think, I think that's just been a common theme in town, you know, in terms of, you know, the schools and CEF and that fine balance between we're really working and helping and yet does that let the town off the hook for some things that it shouldn't be?
Right. And I think, you know, there's an important balance. But when we're getting to the point where we're worried about meeting our MRR because half of our book budget is being fundraised, you know, that's, that's the air of caution that we need to be paying attention to, that we can't just continue to, to fundraise to make up for some of these deficits that the town's not supporting us in.
Do you, do you think, Megan, that the town understands our requirements to that end? You know, because I'm not sure other departments have the same type of caveats or requirements. You know, it's.
I actually.
We have to comply.
Yep. No, I, you know, I think that they do. I don't know if they did a couple of years ago, but the fact that we were given $7,000 in our material budget, I think, was a good sign last year that they're kind of starting to get it. My conversation with Don today was pretty positive. I felt strongly that he understood that we had things that we needed to meet to stay certified. And he, you know, he gave a nod to that during our conversation and asked me to provide him with what, what those items were that he, so that's why it's in the budget folder, what we need to meet. So I think, I think it's getting better. We'll see this budget round. I think it's going to be a telltale. You know, I was new last year. It was my first budget that I put together. They might have wanted to make me feel good, you know? So the honeymoon might be over, we'll see. So I think, you know, I think this year will be very interesting.
Are there any other questions or comments? And if not, could I have a motion to approve? And if not, could I have a motion to approve the three budget presentations that Megan has made for submission to the finance department?
Don moves.
Second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call vote, and I'll call on people as they appear on my screen. Carolyn Coffey, aye. Catherine O'Callaghan?
Aye.
Catherine Harvey?
Aye.
Elaine Bresso?
Aye.
Sarah Pease?
Aye.
Linda Giacomo?
Aye.
Megan Brinsey?
Aye.
Fabulous. The ayes have it. Were there any other items that we wanted to bring up while we have each other? We, Bronwyn was a whirlwind and pulled together the warrant, but since we didn't have it on the agenda, we're going to wait and do it at our regular meeting next week. So we can talk about that sort of thing then, but if there's anything you guys want to know more about, for example, how do things stand with the roof now?
Yeah, so the roof, so we did have somebody come in yesterday. We had some staff concerns about the air quality after the amount of leaks that were in the roof that have been patched, except for one that sprang up yesterday morning. I believe they came and patched today, but I'll have to double check tomorrow. So he came in, he's fairly confident. I haven't gotten the full report yet, but just verbally, he said he didn't, he didn't see anything that he thought was of concern. But he did do some formal testing, so that will come back probably tomorrow. So the general consensus, from what I understand, is the roof, the slate on the roof is not the part that's failing, it's the flat part of the roofs where there's rubber and no slate. So the rubber on the flat part of the roof is failing, which is why we're getting the leaks in the places that we are. So I haven't formally spoken with Nick yet, but somebody has mentioned to me that it is on the docket for the spring to have all of that rubber replaced on our roof. Again, they do not think it's the slate part of the roof. They've had a few people come in and give them an assessment of what the issues are. And they think that for now, the slate can stay, that that's not the issue, it's the rubber.
That's good news.
Yeah.
Is, am I imagining this, but did we, didn't we have pieces of slate falling off the roof at some point?
Yeah, so apparently that's fairly normal for a slate roof or for really any roof that has some type of something that's heavier than like the, I'm going to say, like the tar shingles. That they fall off from time to time, and you just need to go up and they need to be put back on. I don't know if you, so on the edge of, I didn't know what this thing was, but on the edge of our roof, there is almost like a, like almost like a small looking gate. Have to point it out to all of you. It's not through the whole roof, it's only in, in certain places. So it's like a little metal piece, and it looks like a fence, and it kind of goes like this, and it goes all the way across the edge of the roof. So that's put there on purpose because slate tends to fall off the roofs. So it's supposed to catch the slate on these little bracket fence gates. And so that's why those are there. I've always wondered what these little items were. So if anything, we need to have some more of those installed on the edge because we have them in some places and not others, and I'm sure that's strategic due to the pitch of the roof or whatever it is. I'm learning all sorts of interesting slate roof items, but so that might be a conversation because we don't want slate flying off the roof onto the ground, that that's dangerous. But if we can put some of these things slate grabbers, more of them out, it would probably save the slate, first of all, if it falls on the ground, I'm sure it breaks. And it also saves the people who might be under the slate or what have you. So that could be a conversation for sure, but what they're telling me is that, you know, that is reminiscent of a slate roof. Sometimes the slate falls off, just like it would any other roof roofing material, and you just put it back up, and it's not the end of the world, or a need for an entire new roof.
Fingers crossed. All right, anything else? And if not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Don't think we need a roll call for that. Just in time, we just adjourned, Catherine. Welcome back.
I got a lot of stuff going on over here.
All good. All right, guys, thank you.